Thank you, bro. Okay, so welcome everyone to today's Sunday study session. Thank you, Justin, for putting me on, putting me on the host as well. Appreciate it, bro. Yeah, welcome everyone to today's Sunday study session. So we've not got many people in the room. So I feel that we can have quite an intimate study session. That works well for me. How does that work for you guys who are here? Are you, are you busy? Are you only giving me half your attention?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
All in, I'm all in, mate. Let's go.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're here for that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, don't, well done, bro. Wicked, wicked, wicked. Anyone else? You look good. Lenov, what are you saying? Are you there? There's only a couple of us in the room, so we might as well talk to each other. You get me? No, not enough, no, no, no. Okay, cool.
Hi, hi, sorry, it was early morning. Hi.
Oh, no worries, no worries, no worries, no worries. Welcome, welcome, yeah.
Just got my stuff together.
Some of you guys have all got situations. Some of you might be driving, some of you might be, do you know what I mean? Cooking or some of you might be doing whatever. So if you can't give full attention 100%, then you know that's understandable. Just pay as much attention as you can. But you know, those of you who are here, those of you who are present, those of you who have got your pens and pads, those of you who are taking notes, you know, today is a pretty good opportunity, given that we are, we are starting to get a couple more people tripping in. But today is a pretty good opportunity to kind of fire out any questions, you know, to kind of have like a Q and A session if you want to, or to, or to, you know, even look at a pair, do you know what I mean? There's a lot of things that we could do, considering there's only a couple of us here, right? And most of the people that are here, most of us that are here, I can see are regulars. Are there any, is there anyone here who's first, this is their first session? No one that I can see? Hold on, let me just run through again. Initial, I'm definitely, I'm sure I've seen you before. Eric, I don't think I've seen Eric before or Elizabeth. Okay, maybe we've got a couple of first timers in.
Yeah, I've been here once. This is my second time.
Erica says second time, yeah? Okay, okay, okay. Welcome from the welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
What about you, Elizabeth? Yes, you're new. Okay, all right, sister, no worries, no worries.
Yes, I'm new. It's my first time.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Welcome. Okay, well, this session is for you really. So thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Yeah, we, we do these sessions specifically for new starters, for people who have just come in, for people who wanna kind of get a bit of a head start. The fact that you're here is a good sign because it shows that you're already, you've got the mindset, you're plugged in. Yeah, you're, you see that there's a training and you're jumping onto the training to learn. So well done. Congratulate yourself for being here, honestly. And I'm gonna make sure that it's worth your while. So the guys who have been here before, so the guys who have been here a couple of times, can you just unmute and let Sister Elizabeth know, do you know what I mean? Like, what kind of space is this? What do you like, have you taken values from him in the past? Yeah?
We get to learn together, bro. Break, break it down so everyone can understand.
Yeah, it's excellent. It's really, really good. You learn the basics, basically, and it's really nice and simple. So that's the main thing. Yeah, everything is simple.
Yes, bro. Please, last week, yeah, was my first time. And then I actually got information a bit late. So I did not get the full version of it. So I was hoping I could get the recorded version and then listen to it. But I couldn't get that. So I don't know if it's possible to pass that link up and probably the password to last week because that session was very nice to, 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 to listen to.
Yeah, you caught the tail end of it, but it was, you saw value, yeah?
Yeah, it is. I just got about 10 minutes of it, but um, there was so much value to that. So please, I'll be grateful if I can get a link and probably a password to, yes, last week's Zoom call.
That's definitely something that we can do. Justin, do you think you'd be able to do that for me, bro?
Yeah, I'll send that back out again.
Yeah, just ping that over to Eric because he's um, because he's after that link, that'd be appreciated. Yeah, we've got the link there for you, Eric. No worries at all. We've got that, we've got that. We've already posted it in the group. But Justin can just pick it up, you know, over again, back into the group chat, yeah? Maybe it's in the peer group or wherever you posted it last time, Justin.
Yeah, will do.
Yeah, thank you, bro. Okay, today, this week's subject is gonna be a little bit different. I was kind of bouncing between two ideas and what I was gonna cover. But based on yesterday's Super Saturday training, just, just so I can gauge, who was in the Super Saturday training yesterday?
Yeah, I was there.
Excellent, yeah, excellent. How powerful was that training, man? That training inspired me, yeah? I was sitting there thinking, right, one thing I've taken is that I need to be more disciplined. And because that's where my mind has been now, since yesterday's training, I couldn't get my head out of that for today. So today, what I wanna speak about is PIPs and risk management. Yeah, this was one of the first trainings that we've done. This is one of the first ones that we've done. The Sunday study session is, what is it? Who am I? Let me get out the way as well. The Sunday study session is quite a new concept that we've put together. So it's been running since March. It's only been, you know, March, April, May, June. We're in June now. Yeah, it's been running for three months. So you know, if you're here, you're still here early, well done for coming. We run every single Sunday, okay? So my name is Nate. I am a member of the team. I'm a member of Noel, Pitbull, Steve, Coffee, Justin, Justin Markland, and Coffee Carl, Carl's team, who come through. I think Carl come through Nations team, if I remember rightly. So yes, and here, and here we are, right? And we basically put this together because I found that when I started, I was watching the WoW videos and the WoW videos are really helpful. They were really helpful. But I'd done a training session with Cole and I found it to be so much more valuable for me. It was like, whoa, this, it was like, my PR was speaking to me, do you know what I mean? It was like someone on my level was speaking to me in a way that I could understand, right? And I found out to be extremely valuable. So the only thing that I noticed was missing was consistency. It was like we had a one-off meeting and then that was the end, do you know what I mean? And it was like, right, go and study well. And I was like, okay, fair enough, you know, respect to that, fine. And I went and I studied well and I've learned everything that I'm gonna share with you today. However, what I would like to give back, you know, as my way of saying thank you, is that consistency that I thought was missing. So that's what Sunday study sessions are. I am not a millionaire trader, I'm not a six-figure trader. I have not been in the space very long. I am just someone who's been here a little bit longer than some of you guys. I've been trading since September and I've been studying the WoW videos since September, okay? So basically, I've got a lot of time in the game compared to some of you who have just started. You know, Sister said this is her first time here, do you know what I mean? So me, I just wanna help, I just wanna share what I know. I just wanna make your first steps a little bit easier. That's what the Sunday study sessions are. We do this every single Sunday, okay? Please come to every single session and stay up with your studies, right? But I have to express that again, I am not a six-figure trader. I am not going to call trades for you. I'm not gonna tell you, oh, you should jump in AUD/USD. I'm not gonna mark up charts for you. This is the basics. So when you get good enough to excel, to pass this class, you're no longer, you don't need the basics anymore, right? I am still going to be teaching the basics for new people that come in. It's my first time, it's my first time, yeah? So I'm still, that's, that's what we're gonna be sticking with here. And I just want you guys to basically take what you're learning from here and to, you know, and to go and watch the WoW videos so that you can excel past this level because this will only ever be fundamentals and you need more than fundamentals if you wanna be successful. Obviously, fundamentals are foundational, right? And I believe that, you know, yeah, if you don't have a strong foundation, then you can't stand in this industry. Bear in mind, how, what percentage of people drop out of trading? Do you know what I mean? Like, I think only 5% of people make money in trading, I heard the other day, you know? So really, you guys, we need to build a strong foundation. We need to make sure we understand risk management, we understand what a PIP is, we understand, you know, market structure, candlesticks. These are the fundamentals and this is basically what I have intended on running through on this, on this, on these sessions. After a call with Augustine yesterday, I realized I might not be as structured as I would like to be. So I'm gonna try and implement some more structure into the way that these sessions are run. So you know, bear with me, but like I said, guys, if you're here now, go here early, yeah? So we've only been running three months. This is a brand new thing and you know, there's gonna be some developments as it, as it grows. Enjoy it, but just come through to as many as you can. And while you come as well, please let the newer people who come in, let them know, do you know what I mean? If you sign someone up, tell them to come here, tell them to come here and feel, and feel inspired and learn something, right? Because that's what I'm trying to, that's the energy I'm trying to give out. So what we're gonna talk about today is PIPs and risk management. So what is a PIP? Start off from there. So a PIP essentially is a unit of measurement, right? If you drink water, for example, you're gonna say, right, I have drunk two liters of water today, yeah? I've drunk my two liters of water, that's what I've done today. If you are going for a bike ride, you might be like, oh, I cycled for 10 miles, I don't know, do you know what I mean? I cycled, right? I cycled for a couple of miles today. Or you can say, I walked for how, how many miles, yeah? When the market moves, we say the market has moved in PIPs. How many PIPs has the market moved, right? I see two different names for what PIP means. One is point in percentage, one is price in point. Doesn't really seem to make too much of a difference in terms of what a PIP actually does, right? A PIP is a unit of measurement. So I'm gonna share my screen, I'm gonna look at them together and then I'm gonna explain to you how they work pertaining to risk management. All right, so this is the opening screen that you see when you open up Metatrader 4, yeah? Or Trading View, whatever it is you use to trade, you're gonna see your currency pairs here, okay? So you've got your currency pairs, they're on the left and the right. You've got the base pair and the quote pair, right? So the base is always worth one of itself and the quote is worth how much? That's the question, right? So what that means is one euro is worth how many Great British pounds? One euro is worth how many US dollars? Yeah? One pound is worth how many US dollars? One, 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 one. Always worth one of itself. That is called the base currency, yeah? On the pair, the base currency on this currency pair. Then you've got the quote currency, which is in the right. So one euro is of how many, how many pounds? One euro is of how many dollars? How many, how many? What is the answer? This is the quote. Sometimes referred to as the counter as well. The name doesn't really make a difference again to what it does. What is the answer? Well, one euro is worth how many pounds? Well, if you look here on the right-hand side, you see the answer. 0.85. One euro is worth zero pounds and 85 pence. Yeah? What about dollars? How many dollars is one euro worth? One euro is worth one dollar and 21 cents. 1.21. That is what we're looking at here. How many pounds, how many, how many dollars could you get for one pound? Well, one pound is worth one dollar and 41 cents, right? There is a bit of a disparity between this number and this number. Yeah, there is a bit of a disparity. One of them is the low, one of them is the high. You know, not too important with regards to what we're talking about today. Actually, we might cover it a little bit later on. Yeah, we might cover it a little bit later on. Say that again?
Say that buy and sell.
The buy and the sell, exactly, yeah, exactly, exactly. I'll see if I can find a pair with like a nasty spread later and we'll look at it and I'll show you what it, what it looks like. But yes, okay, so you've got six digits here, yeah? Same here, 0.85791. Okay, now in some currency pairs, you're gonna have less than six digits, yeah? It's not common, as you can see, it's not the norm, but it does happen from time to time. In some currency pairs, you're gonna have an extra digit, you're gonna have seven digits, yeah? Again, it's not the norm, but it's possible. All that means is that one dollar is worth 21, do you know what I mean? New Zealand dollars, yeah? So that's like really high value, that's what that will mean, right? So just bear that in mind. But as a rule of thumb, there is six digits, okay? So we're gonna break these six digits down and to do that, I'm gonna swap to this one. Okay, so we've got six digits. So in your notes, I would suggest you write six boxes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, okay? This is where the decimal point usually is. Sometimes a decimal point is here, sometimes a decimal point is somewhere else, it makes no difference. This is where it normally is, okay? All right, so you've got six digits, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So this one on the far right, the really small number that we saw, this tiny little number on the top, okay? Is called a pipette. So that is spelled P-I-P-E-T-T-E, yeah? That one is called a pipette. Now, because a pipette is such a small number, such a small digit, we don't generally give it too much focus. You can, if you want to, and you'll probably learn more about the pipette if you ever start to study nitro effects where the train is really fast. I haven't studied it myself, but I believe what they do is trade on the pipette, I think. But you know, you have to speak to Justin about that one. But yes, you know, you've got your pipette, which is a really small digit. You can see it on the right. So the market will need to move nine pipettes before it moves one pick, okay? So the next number, the next digit, this one right here is called the PIP. Right? That second one is called a PIP. So a PIP is a unit of measurement. A PIP is a unit of measurement, okay? Really important, can't stress that enough. That is the definition, that is, that is, yeah. If someone asks you what is a PIP, the answer is a PIP is a unit of measurement, okay? So the market moves in PIPs. So let's say, for example, the market moves from 1.2100 to, no, actually done that lower, actually, let's do that again. Let's say the market moves from 1, oh, and it moves to 1.21010. Can somebody unmute and tell me how many PIPs has the market moved?
Uh, one pip.
One.
One pip, excellent, perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay, so this is the unit section. If this, if we're ignoring the pipette entirely because the pipette is less than, less than one, yeah? The pipette is less than one, right? So if we're only counting the PIPs, then this would be the unit section. If this is the unit section, then this is the, oh, I can talk then this is the 10 section and this is the 100th section. This would be the thousand section, right? Oh gosh, I've made it worse. There you go, right? So if instead then the market moves from 1.21000 to 1.21100. How many PIPs has the market moved?
10 PIPs.
10 PIPs.
10 PIPs.
10 PIPs, excellent. Okay, brilliant. All right, let's try one more. Let's say the market goes to 1.200. How many PIPs has the market moved?
40 PIPs.
Not quiet?
Four PIPs.
Not quiet? 60. Because what you're looking at here, let me make it simpler because the markets moved the other way, right? Is you're looking at 100 minus 40. Yeah, that's what you're looking at. 100 minus 40. We've got 100 PIPs and the market has gone down 40 PIPs. That's what we're looking at. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So it's minus 60 then?
Minus 60.
Minus 60, exactly. So the market has moved 60 PIPs, but in the other direction, yeah? If the market had gone up 60 PIPs, then it would have gone, I guess, 160. But because the market went, oh no, it wouldn't have, it would have gone then, yeah? Because it went to 040, so it would have been 160. But because the market went down, it ended up as 040. Yeah, the market's gone down 60 PIPs or the market's gone up 60 PIPs. Same difference. Yeah? Do you guys understand what a PIP is? Shall I do a couple more of these?
Yes, please.
Yeah? Come on, let's do a couple more, let's do a couple more.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's just do, let's just do two or three more, yeah? Two or three more, just to make sure we fully get them. Okay, so let's say the market goes from 1.4101 Probably, guys, what have we got? The market has gone from Someone said nine, that, that nine is correct. Nine is correct, yeah, nine is correct. Yeah, nine is correct, yes, yes, it's gone up nine PIPs because it's gone 1.4, think of it like it's gone 1.4. Let me do red. It's gone 1.41010, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 10. Yeah?
Yeah.
The market has moved up 10, nine PIPs to get from 1-0, but 0-1 to 1-0, sorry. Yeah, this is simple maths, this is actually very basic, but it's easy to overthink because we're dealing with money, because we're dealing with PIPs, it's understandable. But don't overthink it, this is very, very simple maths. This is basic addition and, and this, and you know, subtraction, there you go. I'm sorry, give me a try, this is all smart. Okay, let me try one more, let me try one more. Let's say the market goes from 1.3210 to 1.0 oh, to 1.34200.
Increase by
21? No, no.
It's 210 PIPs?
No.
2 minus 1, 0. Yeah? 210 PIPs. From 210 to 420, yeah? It's gone from 210 to 420. 210 PIPs, well done, bro. Oh, yourself a beer later on, come on, you've done well. Okay, brilliant. So we've got what a PIP is, yeah? Is anyone still kind of undecided on? Okay, in fact, in fact, let's do it this way, let's do it this way, let's do it this way. I deleted a lot, sorry, guys, if you didn't take notes, then your last opportunity is gone, right? Okay. All right, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Someone tell me the value of this digit here. How many PIPs?
100?
100.
Excellent, 100 PIPs. 100 PIPs, yeah? Okay, someone tell me the value of this one.
The pipette.
Pipette.
Pipette, excellent, okay, brilliant. And someone tell me the value of this one.
1000. 1000.
1000, brilliant, you lot got it, man, excellent. Okay, let's move on. Yeah? Let's move on, okay, brilliant. So we've got our six digits in front of us, yeah? So if the market moves from 1.21062 to 1.21162, how many PIPs has the market moved?
One.
Nope. If it goes from 062 to 162. Oh.
Negative one.
No. I draw it slightly top of zero, there you go. If it goes from 1.21062 to 1.21162, how many PIPs has the market moved?
Oh, 10.
10.
10 PIPs, 10 PIPs, excellent. Because look, we've got six digits. Okay, we've got six digits. Someone tell me the value of this digit.
10.
10.
That's the 10, yeah? Someone tell me the value of, oh gosh, this is actually a lot harder to draw this one. Oh, okay, decision, let's just stick with what we got.
1000.
1000, exactly. So if the market goes from 1.21062 to 1.31062, the market's moved 1000 PIPs. Yeah? Simple as that?
Yep.
Simple as that? Okay, cool. Now to explain this, this disparity, just a little bit, just so you guys have got a bit of, a bit of background. Okay, so this is the spread. So you notice it's 1.21062 to 1.21072, that is one PIP. So over here, where it says spread, it says 1-0. So the zero is the pipette and the one is the PIP. Yeah, so look, we've got another one here. 1.41, 1.41124, 1.41144. So that has moved two PIPs from 2 to 4. And look, we've got two PIP movement, yeah? And because the pipette is four, then it's 2.0 basically. Look at this one, 0.93703, 0.93726. So from 0 to 2 means it's two PIPs and then from 3 to 6 means it's three pipettes. Yeah, so the spread is two PIPs and three pipettes. Two PIPs, four pipettes, yeah? 22.4 PIPs, three PIPs, 1.5 PIPs. That is the spread. The spread is one PIP. The spread is two PIPs. The spread is 2.3 PIPs. Is there anyone here that does not make sense to you?
Thank you, because I've never paid attention to that before.
Come on, bro.
Never.
That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Okay, so you can see here. Yeah, no, okay, good. You can see what that means, wicked. Okay, let's move on. Okay, so we've got, which one shall we look at? Euro, USD, or GBP? I think I said GBP/USD this, this time around. Oh, I'm gonna get rid of all of these lines because I always leave them. Not me using four moving averages.
But the pre-sentence, not in there, yeah?
Come on, okay, oh, I'm gonna need to take my thing. Andy, there you go. Thank you. Okay, can everyone see that all right?
Yeah.
Sideways, we're working for everyone, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, wicked. Shall we start off on the month? Yes, let's start off the month, okay? So this blue line represents where current price is right now at this exact moment in time, right? So we're looking at GBP/USD and we're looking at the monthly chart. For those of you who don't know the difference in timeframes, don't worry too much. You know, when you watch the previous video from last week, you'll get a rough idea, but we'll probably do a session on timeframes anyway. We're gonna do sessions on everything, guys, on candlesticks, on timeframes, on PIPs, yeah? So today, we're looking at PIPs and risk management, that's what we're talking about. Okay. So right now, the market is at 1.41127, yeah? 1.41127, right? So if the market goes from 1, oh, 1,1. If the market goes from 1.41127 down to 1.21, you know, 648, whatever, ignore the 127, ignore the 648. Let's say it's 1.41000, 1.21000. How many PIPs would the market need to move in order to complete that?
Could you please say that again?
Sure, sure. So can you see the, the numbers on the right-hand side? Yeah? Yeah, so in the blue box is current price, 1.41127, but let's just pretend it says 1.41000, just to make the maths easier, yeah? And then in the black box, which I just put there, that black line, right? Is the predicted price, where I think price is gonna go, 1.21648. But again, let's just pretend this is 1.21000, just to make the maths easy. So from 1.41000 to 1.21000, how many PIPs would the market need to move in order to close this gap?
It's minus 1195.
Nope.
No, plus 204.[1759.62]
Two thousand.
We're going, we're going from four, one, zero, zero, zero to two, one, zero, 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 I think someone just said it.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, two thousand pips, yeah, from four to two in the thousand section, that's two digits, yeah? So it's four, one, zero, zero, zero to two, one, zero, 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 yeah? So from four to two is two pips, is two digits, sorry, and that is in the the second box, right? So you've got, you've got the first box, then you've got thousands, hundreds, tens, units, pipettes, see the six digits? Yeah, so if you're looking at the chart and you're like, okay, I think this is gonna come down to this, one point two, one. Um, then you know that's a two thousand pip move, if you can catch it. If the market goes down, up, down, up, if it comes back down and hits this same target again, then you've just earned two thousand pips, right? Brilliant, and let's zoom in a little bit and see if we can, because right now we're looking at a a much bigger timeframe. Um, I'm gonna zoom in and look at, say, like an hour four, I think, there you go, excellent. Okay, let's look at this hour four, because this looks good, um. So this looks like the market is ranging, what does ranging mean? It basically means the market stays within a given range, so if you look at this blue line here, yeah? Blue, red line, this blue line with the red line behind it, yeah, where, which is current price, one point four, one, one, two, seven, it hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is the timeframe, and you look at, um, my black line that I've just put right at the top of that range. Yeah, then you can see that price, oh, come on, tell me I can't do both. You think I can't do both, what's that? There you go, yeah, you can see that price is bouncing in between that particular range, it broke out a little bit. But price is in between this range, yeah, it's staying in this area, in this, in this range, right? Um, and that is called ranging, that's what it's called, ranging, right? So how many pips are in between this range? Let's say, for example, you were to presume that price was going to continue in this range off into the distant future. And it's gonna bounce up again and touch this black line, yeah? So we can see this red line, black line, 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 red line. Yeah, so let's say we were to presume that price is gonna touch the black line next, we could be wrong, price might drop down, right? We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, yeah, we're just, we're just making an educated guess that price is gonna go up and touch the black line. The black line is one point four, one, nine, three, nine. So someone give me a rough idea, how many pips would I earn if I caught this move?
Eighty pips.
Eighty pips?
Yeah.
Yeah, same, let me do them, I've not done it myself, so one point four, one, one, two, to one.
Eighteen, one.
Nine, three, that's exactly, well done, guys, well done, well done, well done, come on. Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Let's go.
Yeah, eighty pips, right, eighty pips, so let's say you're trying to catch this eighty pip move. I mean, it looks simple enough, obviously we should respect the market because we don't know, isn't it? I could be wrong, yeah, so let's say it's Monday morning, because this is where the charts are right now. So let's say it's Monday morning and I decide to jump into this trade, right? And I'm like, right, I think price is gonna go up and I'm gonna earn eighty pips on Monday morning, right? And then on Tuesday, when it hits the black line, I'm gonna try and trade it again on the way down, because I'm scalping the market or because that's, that's my strategy. Yeah, let's just say, for example, that's what I intend on doing, right? So if I wanted to catch these eighty pips on Monday, these potential eighty pips on Monday. Then I would enter, my entry point would be where, where would my entry point be?
One point four, what, the day is one point?
Exactly. This is my entry point, excellent, right? Okay, so if this is my entry point and this is my take profit, where should my stop loss be?
It should be down, down the entry point.
Under.
Excellent, good question, right, Nate, good question, come on, okay, so, so there's not really like a a concrete answer for this question, okay? Um, you know, you can put your stop loss wherever you want, however, it's worth knowing that if you put your stop loss too close to your entry point. Then it will tap your stop loss and knock you out, if you put your stop loss too far from your entry point. Then the risk that you would incur would not be worth a little dippy reward, yeah? Like, you might get eighty pips, but if you're wrong, you could lose, like, what is that, it's over, is that a thousand pips almost? Do you know, from one point three eight to four, one, no, it's not, it's a hun, it's a couple hundred pips, it's a couple hundred pips, yeah? Like a lot, quite a few hundred pips though, yeah? So, um, you know, you don't really wanna risk a few hundred pips to possibly catch eighty pips. Because the market might continue and just say, no, I'm finished with this range, I'm on my way down, now, see you later. Very possible, yeah, it's very possible, that could happen, anything can happen, so you wanna manage your risk, right? And you wanna think, you wanna think, what are you willing to risk on the trade? So you've got a couple of options here, me personally, I would probably put my, um, stop loss below this wick here. Yeah? So if you're laughing right now, then you're not on mute and I can hear you. Thank you, right, this is where I would put my stop loss, right there, yeah? Oh, I can still hear you, sorry, whoever that, I think you're in the kitchen or whatever. But we can hear you, if you just mute for us, thank you, thanks, guys, um, okay, yeah, so, right, this wick right here, which is the lowest and maybe around here. I would be looking for something around there to put my, um, to put my stop loss. So I'd be looking at this line and I'd be like, okay, look, it's roughly the same, maybe if I put my stop loss just below here, maybe, yeah, let's just say, for argument's sake, right? And that's why I choose to put it, so if it goes down, right, how many pips will I lose, somebody? Oh, you still there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all muted fifty two.
Almost like fifty.
One point four, one, one, two, to one point four, zero, six, four, about fifty pips I've got. So from six to, um, the next ten, yeah, is forty pips, that's forty pips, and then you can see that is one hundred and ten, so that's fifty pips. Maybe fifty two pips, yeah, so I've got a fifty two pip stop loss, so if this trade loses, I will lose fifty two picks. If this trade succeeds, I will win eighty picks, so let's say I'll lose fifty, I'll win eighty. Now, that might not be a good risk to reward ratio for some of you, some of you might be like, nah, I don't personally fancy that trade, not for me, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, yeah? But this is how you manage your risk, okay? You don't necessarily just say, okay, I'm gonna go for a ten pip stop loss, because you'll get tapped out, right, it will happen. What you need to do is, what does the market, what opportunity does the market offer you? So if the market is saying, this is the lowest wick, this is the lowest wick, this is the lowest wick, right? So put it below here, because if it does break down past this line here, past this line here, then the chances are it's gonna carry on at least down to here, right? If it breaks past this line and goes down past this line, because it hasn't done that before. And if it does, then it's possible that it will go down to at least here, right? So unless you wanna lose, how many pips is this? One point four, zero, zero, seven to one point four, one, one, two, that is about a hundred pips. So unless you wanna lose a hundred pips for the, for the sake of catching eighty pips, which I don't think is good math, I don't think you wanna risk one hundred pips. For the sake of possibly catching eighty pips, you know, I'd be looking to maybe risk forty pips, even fifty pips is a bit much for me personally. Do you know what I mean, I'd be, I'd be looking to risk forty pips to catch eighty pips, you know, um. So I might be looking for a better entry point or a better trade than this, yeah? However, this is the entry point you've been given, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit so you can get a better idea of, um, of of what I'm talking about. So those of you who were here for my, um, class on candlesticks will know, okay, oh. What is this candle here, oh, no, no, let's, we've left a little bit. Ah, well done, I'm the host now, there you go, thanks, guys, this is the second time I've done this, hold on.
Oh, I.
Oh, I almost closed it, my days, okay, I'm back, I'm back.
Thank you.
This is what I want, please, okay, someone who has taken or who's studied candlesticks. Tell me, what are these, these candlesticks? Two of them, one on the left, one on the right, what is this candlestick pattern called?
Indecision candle.
No. Not indecision candle.
Oh, um.
The indecision candle looks a little bit more like this. Engulfing, exactly, yeah, the indecision candle looks a bit more like, a little bit more like this, but that even, that's not an indecision candle, right, it's a bit more like this. This is called an engulfing candle, okay, so for those of you who don't know, uh, maybe next week we'll study candlesticks, yeah, but not this week, this week we're studying pips, okay? Um, and engulfing candle suggests that price is going to go in that direction, yeah? That's what it suggests, we've got another one here, and engulfing candle suggests, yeah? Um, we've got another one, where did I see it, where did I see it, here it is. Can you spot it, can you spot it before I draw it, bow, right there, right? So basically, the way that I use engulfing candles, the way that I use engulfing candles, um, so if you're in the kitchen, again, if you could just mute yourself for me, please. I can hear you, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, so the way that, the way that we use engulfing candles, the way that I use engulfing candles, sorry. Is when you see an engulfing candle forming, okay? You wanna be patient and you wanna wait for that engulfing candle to finish forming, you don't wanna enter the market while the candle is forming, okay? Um, and there's absolutely no guarantee that this works, it doesn't work a hundred percent of the time, I need to make that clear, okay? Um, a, 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 an encand, a candle is an indicator. Until we study the candles, I really want you guys to to respect the market and understand that today we are talking about clips. This is not a strategy meeting, this is not me telling you every time you see an engulfing candle you should jump in. In fact, in fact, look at that, right, hold on, look at that, we've got another engulfing candle here and price went down. And we've got another engulfing, kind of engulfing candle here and price went down, yeah? So it's not a guarantee that every time you see an engulfing candle, price is gonna go up, I just wanna make that clear, okay? Um, but the way that I use engulfing candles is when you see an engulfing candle at a strong support level. Or a strong resistance level, yeah, when you see that engulfing candle at that strong level, um. Then what you do is you enter the market once the candle has finished forming, right? So this would be your entry point, or if you're daring, yeah, then, um, when this next candle is being formed. You notice this is where the candle started and it came all the way down to here, so maybe I'd be on a smaller timeframe, looking for the best possible entry down here, maybe, do you know what I mean? But once I've seen this engulfing candle, I now know that price should be going up, yeah, I've seen this candle at this level and I'm confident price is gonna go up, right? So I will enter here and my stop loss will be below the engulfing candle, right? So that means there is a predetermined amount of pips that I am risking, I didn't choose, I didn't say I'm gonna risk ten pips. I didn't say I'm gonna risk fifty pips, I didn't say that, I don't have that choice, yeah? Me, I see an engulfing candle and I'm like, okay, now I've seen this candle, I'm gonna enter here and this is where my risk must be. Because if the market, if I enter here and this is where my risk is, then boom, I've lost a trade, I don't wanna wait for it to go all the way down. Do you know what I'm saying, I don't wanna wait for it to go all the way down, if I enter here and this is where my stop loss is, then boom, I'm out the trade. I'm not waiting, I'm not sitting there playing games with this trade, yeah, I'm in or I'm out, do you know what I mean, if, if either the idea was right or it was wrong. So what that means is that you need to manage your lot size, okay? So your lot size, um, obviously, as we know, the, one of the beautiful things about trading, guys, is that we are entering this market on a price per pip basis, okay? So what that means is if the market moves, um, eighty pips, right? And you enter the market at one pound per pip, then you will earn one pound for every pip that the market moves, you will earn eighty pounds. Yeah, that is, that is how simple trading is, if you enter the market at ten pence per pip and the market moves eighty pips. Then you will earn ten pence for every pip that the market moves, you will earn eight pounds, right? If you enter the market at two pounds per pip, you will earn two pounds for every pip that the market moves, you will earn a hundred and sixty pounds, right? However, however, if the trade goes the wrong way, you will lose at the same rate per pip. So if you enter at one pound per pip, yeah, and you've got a fifty pip stop loss. And the trade goes the wrong way, which is all too possible with this industry, the market can be volatile, yeah? So if the trade goes the wrong way and you've got a fifty pip stop loss, then you will lose fifty pips, okay? So that's fine, everybody loses in trading, you will never win every single trade, it's impossible, it's, it's no, there's no one on the world that exists that has won every single trade. Unless, if that person exists, then they, they, they are living on the island somewhere and no one knows that they exist, because, you know, they're doing their thing, you know? But I, I don't think there's anybody out there who has won every single trade that they've ever entered, um. So, you know, it's fine, right, the, the, especially at our level, we're studying, we're learning, we're trying, what's important is not to over leverage, is to manage your risk, okay? Um, you could enter the market at ten pounds per pip, and if you catch eighty pips, just that little, little eighty pip move that we saw. Look how easy that move is to catch, yeah, if we caught that move at ten pounds per pip, then we just earn, what, eight hundred pounds? Yes, please, do you know what I mean, I could do eight hundred pounds right now, however, if by just a off chance, yeah, we've made a small mistake. Or even if we've made no mistake and something outside of our control happens, you know, the, 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 um, the, the US economy, you know, someone might, I don't know. Some Michael Jordan says he's not taking a vaccine, something happens, yeah, and it affects the market and the market drops a tiny little bit. And we start losing the trade, yeah, then we're gonna lose the trade at ten pounds per pip. So if you have two hundred pounds in your account and you lose a trade with a fifty pip stop loss at ten pounds per pip. You just lost five hundred pounds, you've only got two, your account is finished, yeah, it's happened to me and it, please don't let it happen to you. Manage your risk, yeah, first and foremost, risk management is a mindset, it's, it's a matter of how you think, it's that, okay, do you know what? I'm gonna enter this trade and I could win, you know, I'm sure I'll win, maybe I'm willing to take more of a risk on this trade, do you know what I mean? Maybe like, um, you'll see a trade and you're mad confident about it, right? Like, let's say, for example, um, let's just say this trade for argument's sake, right? Let me see if I can zoom in, hopefully it's a good candlestick there for us, look at that, beautiful, right? So we've got a nice engulfing candle on the way down. Yeah, so I'm entering the market here and I'm managing my risk here, no, me, I'll probably manage my risk up here, maybe, it depends, I have the choice, yeah? I can manage my risk here or I can manage my risk here, in fact, if I'm being cheeky, then I'll wait while this candle's forming, we know it started here, we know it's come up here. I'm waiting for it to get right to the back of this engulfing candle and I'm on a smaller timeframe, looking for a better entry point, if I'm on it, yeah? But obviously, let's just say for, 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 for standard sake, this is where I've entered and this is probably where my stop loss would be, right? Um, how many pips is that, let's see if we can work it out, so we're gonna go from one point four, two, six, two, oh, to one point four, one, five, one, oh. That's what we're gonna do, somebody, someone come and let me know, how many pips is that? From one point four, one, five, one, ignore the zero, so pipette, to one point four, two, six, two, ignore the zero, so pipette, just some rough math, yeah? So we've got.
Hundred and ten.
Excellent, there you go, exactly, perfect, right? So we've got a hundred and ten pips, so I know better than to enter this trade at one pound per pip. Because I don't wanna lose a hundred and ten pounds if the trade goes wrong, right? How about then, if I wanted to, well, if I wanted to enter this trade, right, with a hundred pip stop loss, I'd probably enter it, you know, maybe ten pence per pip. Just because, you know, if the trade goes wrong, then I will lose more than I want, but still I'll lose an amount that I can afford to lose. And if the trade goes right, then, you know, I'm laughing, yeah, it's a good trade still, I'll be kicking myself, ah, why didn't I enter with more, why didn't I enter with more? But it's fine, do you know what I mean, because I entered the trade and I won, I'm not gonna really complain when I win a trade, I'm more likely to complain when I lose a trade, but win a trade is fair enough. You know, I've managed my risk and I've won the trade, if I manage my risk and I lose a trade, I won't really complain, because it's that, fair enough, I've only lost a ten, you know what I'm saying? Um, whereas if I don't manage my risk and I lose a trade, oh no, I've just lost a hundred pounds, now I'm crying, guys, I'm crying, because I am not, you know, um. Nathan, that can afford to be losing a hundred pounds in one trade, do you know what I'm saying? So me, I'm, you know, I'm not at that level, I'm still studying, Sunday study sessions, you get me, we're building, I can't be losing a hundred pounds in one trade. So let's say I wanted to enter, um, a bit more risky, I've entered here, one point four, one, four, oh, but my stop loss is here. One point four, one, eight, six, five, somebody, anyone wanna help with the math? One point four, one, four, eight, to one point four, one, eight, six.
Three.
Thirty.
Eight.
Thirty eight, come on, guys, you guys are getting it, man, lovely, thirty eight, brilliant, okay, uh, hoping I've got, hoping I've got it right, actually, I know it's thirty something, so I'm gonna trust you, look. Um, okay, yeah, brilliant, so let's say forty pips, yeah, thirty eight pips, round it up, and let's say when I enter my trade. I've entered, bow, and I'm just gonna set a roughly a forty pip stop loss, so it might work out two pips higher, who knows, who cares, yeah? I'm gonna enter a forty pip stop loss, um, so now, instead of my one hundred pip stop loss, I've got a forty pip stop loss. So now if I enter a one pound a pip, I'm not gonna lose a hundred pounds, I'm gonna lose forty pounds. So now I might be more, hmm, maybe I can afford to lose forty pounds, I'd prefer not to, still, okay, instead of one pound per pip, how about I enter a fifty p per pip? Hmm, if I enter a fifty p per pip, I'm not gonna lose forty pounds, I'm gonna lose half, I'm gonna lose twenty pounds, I could definitely afford to lose twenty pounds, a fifty p per pip, that's a great trade. Especially if I'm really confident in this trade. Yeah, especially if I'm really confident in this trade. If I'm like, do you know what? I really believe this trade is gonna hit. I'm confident in it. Do you know what I mean? Like, for whatever reason, let's say, um, I mean, with this trade specifically, it's a, it's a really important level. And you can see that because now, once it's reached this level again, look, do you know what I mean? It's struggling to get past it. So as soon as it hit this level last time, I could have been confident this was gonna happen, right? So I'm entering the market, I'm managing my risk, now I've got a forty pip stop loss. So when I entered before with a one hundred pip stop loss, I wouldn't dare enter at one pound a pip cause I would lose a hundred pounds. I wouldn't enter at fifty P a pip because I would lose fifty pounds. Um, I would probably enter at ten P a pip so that I lose ten pounds, right? So if I enter there and I win the trade, best case scenario, cause I could, I could come out here, I could come out here. But let's just say best case scenario, I win the trade, right? That is, uh, from the top to the bottom, roughly, one point three six six zero to one point four, let's go two zero zero zero. Um, so one point three six, seven, eight, nine. That is three hundred and forty pips roughly, yeah? So I'm risking, have I got that right? Three hundred and forty pips? Yeah. Uh, one point three, oh, no, 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 sorry. I've not got that right. Ah, come back here. I've not got that right. I completely missed out. So from one point three six, that's four hundreds up to four zero, four hundred and into four one and into four two. Well, that's about six hundred pips, okay? So I would be risking, I'd be risking one hundred pips for the sake of catching, can I say, six hundred pips? Yeah, wicked trade, do you know what I mean? But at the same time, I would not, I wouldn't enter, I wouldn't risk a hundred pounds. I would risk a hundred pips for the sake of catching six hundred pips. But I wouldn't risk a hundred pounds. I wouldn't do that because I don't have that money in my account to risk a hundred pounds. I don't have that mindset, yeah? I've never had a million pounds. Sorry, these are, these are doing like summertime. Um, I've never had like a million pounds or, you know, where I can be like, okay, I've been to the mountaintop. You know, let me, um, let me just jump in and go through it. I'm getting there, but I've never been there, right? So I'm really careful. I'm really managing my risk. That's what's important, okay? Risk management is what today's, is what today's Sunday study session is about, right? So I know I could enter this trade at one pound per pip and lose a hundred pounds or I could enter at fifty P per pip and lose, um, um, fifty pounds or I could enter at ten P per pip and lose ten pounds. If I win this trade, I'm gonna win sixty pounds, right? However, the second trade that we saw, where the stop loss was a little bit lower, yeah, and it was a forty pip stop loss, now I've got a little bit more of a lot size to play with, right? So I can enter the market and be like, okay, right, I'm gonna enter at, um, well, one pound per pip, now I'm losing forty pounds. Um, but I'm still gonna win six hundred pips, remember, yeah, if this trade hits. So I could think one pound per pip, but I might lose forty pounds, okay? Do, am I willing to risk forty pounds? No, personally, no, right? Um, how about I enter at fifty P per pip? I could lose twenty pounds. Am I willing to lose twenty pounds? Yes, my, my standard risk per trade is five pounds. But if I'm super confident in a trade, then I might be willing to risk twenty pounds, do you know what I mean? Come on then, let me shoot my shot, right? Cause if it wins, then I'll just enter this trade at fifty P per pip, do you know what I mean? This is my day, right? I'm laughing. So if it loses, I've lost twenty pounds, I've burnt myself, ah, that's pushed me back more than I would like. Cause like I said, I don't like to lose more than five pound per trade. So losing twenty pounds in one trade is the equivalent of me losing four trades. Do you know what I'm saying? I don't wanna lose four trades in one trade if I can avoid it, right? So I'm trying to just lose one trade at five, five pounds. But like I said, if I'm confident in it and I'm, and I'm, and I've set my risk, this is it. Do you know what? If, if the trade goes back and hits my stop loss and then goes down, I'm gonna wave it goodbye. I'm not gonna enter again. Because, or I might enter again at a lower risk size, but I'm never gonna risk another fifty P because this could happen, yeah? So I won't jump in again and be like, right, I've lost it, but I'm gonna get it this time. And then it comes back up and just, and just batters me. No, thank you, do you know what I mean? So I've made my trace, I tried, I shot my shot, I failed, I lost my twenty pounds. It is what it is, right? Or I won six hundred pips at fifty P per pip. Guys, that's three hundred pounds, yeah? So for the sake of potentially losing twenty pounds, I have won three hundred pounds on this trade. That is everything. For me, that is, that is a good trade. That's good trading, right? But it takes time to get there. There's a lot to learn. There's a lot to learn, okay? What I wanna really make sure that you guys get from today, oh, that's what's going on. What I wanna make sure you guys get from today is that we're talking risk management, okay? So obviously, a lot of us are not calling our own trades. Now you know, now you know what the charts look like. Now you know what it is that we're looking at. Okay, what is that these guys, these titans among men, right, are looking at, right? Now we know what it is they're looking at. Now we know what it is they're doing for us. Now we know what they're, they're reading, yeah? They're saying, okay, right, he is Justin, is saying, enter the trade now, entry at one point two one eight, yeah? Entry at one point two one eight. Now ignore this because current price is one point two one zero nine, right? So someone tell me how many pips has the market moved? Justin said enter at one point two one eight. The market is now at one point two one zero nine. How many pips has the market moved?
Seventy one pips.
Ah, I reckon you cheated.
Yes, I did.
Excellent. So the market's moved seventy one pips, yeah? He said enter at one point two one eight. That's what he said. And he said, I believe it's gonna go to one point two zero eight, which is a hundred pips. But he said the stop loss must be forty five pips. Do you understand, right? So what he's saying is, if you enter here and price goes, this is a, it's a sell. Oh, I managed it from the higher. Hold on. If you enter here and price goes down twenty pips, it goes down again another twenty pips, it goes down again another twenty pips. Excellent. He thinks price is gonna go down to here, right? Brilliant. It would be great if it did, right? But who knows? Price could come back and hit stop loss, forty five pips, yeah? So, or price could, uh, where am I? Let me, there it is, it's up there. Or price could hit stop hit number one and then go up and hit stop loss, yeah? And that's it. You're out the game. You could have won twenty pips, but instead you lost forty five pips, yeah? Because you didn't know about what I'm just teaching you today, because you don't understand the basics of risk management, right? So, um, when he's saying enter now, he's saying enter now. He's not saying enter now. He's not saying enter now. He's saying enter now, right? If you enter here, if you enter here, then, you know, it's up to you. Depends. The market could still go from there to there or the market could come back there. There's no guarantee at this point. Now, that's it. There's no longer any guarantee as to what's gonna happen. You know, he's, he's suggested that the market is gonna go from entry to here. That's what he believes is gonna happen. He's right so far, but manage your risk, okay? Let's look at another one. Uh, let's say Goss. I like Goss. Goss gives us loads. Look. So Goss is saying entry at one point two one, yeah? And he's saying, I believe price is gonna go nine hundred pips, okay? But look at the stop loss, fifty pips. So with all of these trades coming your way, guys, all you really have to do, all you have to do is manage your risk, yeah? And you will be consistent. So let me show you a trick for managing your risk. Okay, and then we're gonna, and then we're gonna, I'll show you one more thing and then I'll show you wow and then I'll take questions, right? So here's a trick for managing your risk, right? So, um, if your stop loss, let's say for example, you've got a set amount, you've got a set amount that you're willing to risk. You're willing to risk ten pounds per trade. Let's say you've got a one thousand pound account and you're willing to risk ten pounds per trade. That's a lot. I wouldn't recommend it, but hey, do you know what I mean? You wanna, you wanna get there as quickly as you can. You wanna, you know, your, it's your money. Yeah, live your life, right? Let's say you set, you said, this is what I'm willing to risk. Me personally, I'm willing to risk five pounds per pip, uh, five pounds per trade, sorry. I'm willing to risk five pounds per trade, right? But that means that my wins are only gonna be, you know, um, smallish because that's just the nature of the game. Let's do it based on five and ten, so you guys can see the difference, right? Um, so I'm willing to risk five pounds per trade. So if the stop loss is forty five pips, then what should my lot size be? Well, um, if I enter at one pound per pip and I lose forty five pips, well, at one pound per pip, then I've lost forty five pounds, yeah? If I enter at ten pence per pip, then I will lose four pound fifty, which is under my five pound threshold. Front to a ten pence per pip. If I enter at twenty pence per pip, then I will lose nine pounds, yeah? Four pound fifty times two, I will lose nine pounds, right? So if you wanted to risk ten, uh, ten pounds per trade, then that can work as well. Um, just so you can see what that looks like, that's zero point zero one or zero point zero two when you're on your MetaTrader app, right? Um, but this is it. You're like, okay, I'm willing to lose five pounds. So me, I'm gonna enter zero point zero one. That's it, right? Um, if I win a hundred pips, then at ten pence per pip, I'm gonna earn myself a tenner. Great, good trade. Could have lost four pound fifty. I won a tenner. Wicked. Thank you, Justin, right? Um, what about this one? What about this one? I like Goss. I like Goss's odds. So again, uh, there you go, fifty pips. If I enter at ten pence per pip, ten pence times fifty pips is five pounds, boom. If I enter at twenty pence per pip, twenty pence times fifty pips is ten pounds, boom, yeah? So again, if I win this trade all the way to the top and we get nine hundred pips, right? Then is that ninety pounds I've earned? Ninety pounds or conversely, um, a hundred and eighty pounds? If you jumped in at twenty pence per pip, so a hundred and eighty pips, yeah? With a risk of ten pounds, but it's the risk that you have to consider every single time you enter a trade. Because, because you never know which one of these trades are gonna hit, which ones are not. Yeah, we've got a good success rate, but the success rate is good at the very least up until take profit one. And then after that, you know, it, it does start to drop. So you do have to watch the trade. You have to understand the trade. You have to study the trade. You have to know what you're looking for if you intend on taking your trades all the way to the finishing line, yeah? Then you have to know what you're looking for. You have to know how long is it gonna take for the market to move nine hundred pips? How long does that normally take? Is that something that happens in a day? Is it something that happens in three months? How long does it take for the market to move nine hundred pips? Sorry, how long does it take for this market to move three hu- nine hundred pips? Yeah, how long does it take for this market to move nine hundred pips? And how long does it take for this market to move eight hundred pips? How long does it take for this market to move eight hundred pips? Yeah, how long does it take? Sixty pip stop loss, do you know what I mean? What is my risk? Okay, I'm willing to lose five pounds. So already I'm losing six pounds if I enter this trade, right? But at the same time, I'd probably go for it because it's Goss and I trust Goss. And look, we're up, yeah? So brilliant. Can't argue with Goss, man. Goss is definitely the guy. Um, but the, the, the key is risk management. I'll tell you why the key is risk management. Um, and sorry, guys, if any of you are in a rush, we are starting a teeny bit late, so I'm almost done. Um, but I'll tell you why risk management is so crucial because you could enter this trade here at ten pence per pip and, um, earn yourself a hundred pips. That's ten pounds. You could enter this one at ten pence per pip and earn yourself another ten pounds, ten pence per pip and earn yourself ninety pounds. You've now got a hundred and twenty pounds. Um, and then you could get gassed and enter this trade at one pound per pip and lose sixty six pounds immediately, yeah? And now you're, you're vexed and you're thinking, ah, so you enter the next trade at, maybe let me not do one pound, let me do fifty P. Yeah, and you lose, what, uh, fifteen pounds, do you know what I mean? And then you enter the next trade and you're vexed. You enter at ten pence per pip and you only win fifty pounds and you're like, ah, do you know what I mean? Or it even, it only hits CP, um, four and that's it. And then that's the end of the trade, do you know what I mean? And now you've only won, um, ten pounds at ten pence per pip, you know? So now you're, we're gonna write this twenty pounds, sorry. Yeah, uh, my ten pence a pip, do you know what I mean? And now you're like, oh, man, I wish I had jumped in more. Because you're not managing your risk, you're changing your lot size. But changing the lot size is okay as long as the risk remains the same, do you understand? So if you are given a trade which has a ten, a five pip stop loss, then enter at one pound per pip. Cause if you lose that trade, you're gonna lose five pounds. If you find the trade that has a fifty pip stop loss, then enter at ten pence per pip. Cause if that trade loses, you're gonna lose five pounds. If you find the trade that has a, um, a thirty pip stop loss, or let's say a twenty, let's say a thirty pip stop loss, um, and you wanna lose five pounds, then you might be able to get a twenty pence per pip, I think, yeah? And you'll lose six pounds from, from, right? Yeah, cause that's thirty pence per pip, uh, so, sorry, um, at thirty pips, at ten pence per pip, you lose three pounds. At twenty pence per pip, you lose six pounds. So if you get a thirty pip stop loss, then you can enter at twenty pence per pip, do you know what I mean? But it's all about managing your risk. Obviously, I'm saying this on a lower level. If unlike me, you guys are already, you know, millionaires and you've got thousands and thousands of pounds in your account that you're willing to risk because never trade what you're not willing to lose, yeah? If you've already got thousands that you're willing to lose, then don't enter at ten pence. Come on, man. Enter at, you know, two, three pounds a pip, but as long as you are managing your risk, as long as you're saying, okay, I am, let's say you've got a hundred pounds in your account, you're willing to risk five pounds. Let's say you've got, um, um, a thousand pounds in your account, you're willing to risk fifty pounds. Let's say you've got ten thousand pounds in your account, you're willing to risk five hundred pounds, yeah? As long as the risk remains the same, then as your account grows, it will, all it will do is grow. That's it, because the risk remains the same. At first, you're not gonna make loads of money. You're not, you're gonna be earning, you know, two pounds sixty nine. You're gonna be earning whatever, do you know what I mean? It's calm, man. Just manage your risk and make sure you're not losing more than five pounds, ever. Never lose more than five pounds. That's your risk management. If you're starting new, manage your risk. Be very, very conscientious of that. Last thing I'm gonna show you and then I'm finished. Um, so obviously me, I, as I said to you at the beginning, guys, I am, um, a student, right? I've joined this space and I've been studying, I've been learning. Wherever I've been studying, I've been studying on Wow. Obviously, there are a lot of platforms. I don't have all of them because I'm not a gold member. Uh, there's a lot of platforms that you can have. There's Sense where they post stuff on there. There's Mind Hub. You know, there's all sorts. For me, this is the one that I use. This is Wow. Wow has got everything, yeah? It's on the basic bronze package, you know, there you go. Look at that, Justin. NFT. Can you imagine, right? Can you imagine? Um, so yeah, there you go. Wow, right? So if you scroll right down to the bottom, this is where I go and hit on the educators link on the left-hand side. Let me just make sure everyone can see that. Bow, yeah? So if you scroll right to the bottom of the page on Wow and hit this educators link, it will take you to a list of all the educators, right? Um, you can choose any educator you want. Me personally, I like to go for my brother, Stefan. Yeah, this is my guy for the time being. You know, I also like, um, I actually like Justin, you know? Where's Justin? Justin, Justin's good, man. Justin's a good trader. Um, and Goss, I think Goss does these ones in Spanish, but, um, where's Goss? I've gone past him. Goss does, Freddie, Freddie's a gold man. Do you know what I mean? You've got Jen who does stocks. Um, you can pick whoever you want. Cryptocurrency, look at that, yeah? Um, Anointed, come on, Anointed. Family, Sirius Brother, Sirius Bravo, this man right here, yeah? Um, so let's say you select one of them. I'm gonna press watch on Stefan.
Yeah.
Right? And I'm gonna pick, uh, Learn Forest Basics. Okay, wicked. Now, it's gonna tell me when his next live stream is because Stefan goes live multiple times during the week, right? It's not just a one-off. I can turn on my alert. I can turn on my alert. Yeah, which I've just turned it on by mistake. I can turn on my alert so I know, okay, Stefan's posted a video, um, you know, or I can just stay put, but it will tell me obviously when this time runs out, I'll get an alert from my phone. Um, if I wanna watch Stefan's live session, but if not, then I'll scroll down to the bottom and I'll see his recent streams, yeah? So like only a hundred and nineteen people have seen this. Why is that? Only eighty-two people have seen this. Why is that? Look at this, an hour-long video. You see, come on, that's what I'm talking about.
I'll watch him.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah? Fifty-one minutes, yeah? Fifty-three minutes. How long have we been on this call today? About an hour now? Come on, yeah, one hour twenty, right? So, so literally Stefan is a professional. Stefan has money in the bank and Stefan is telling you how to get that money in the bank. Me, I'm gonna tell you what is a pip. I'm gonna tell you what is a candle. I'm gonna help you with the fundamentals because the fundamentals are gonna help you understand what Stefan is telling you. But it is imperative that you listen to a professional trader educate you, yeah? Because me, I'm only gonna tell you so much. Like I said at the beginning, this is for beginners. And when new people come into the company, I want you to send them here. It's not just Stefan. Let's look at Justin. Forest Basic, yeah? Again, he's got his next live video at the top, whenever that loads up. And then scroll down and look, all of this, all of this, all of this. Watch it now. You can press the button and you can watch it right now, yeah? And you can learn, um, strategies, you can learn, um, fundamentals. Every single week, Justin's out here putting. Every single week, Justin's out here putting, putting out work, yeah? And it's not just Justin. I just wanna make sure that that's, that's clear, right? Every single one of these educators has got videos, okay? Every single one of them has got videos beneath their name, right? So. Let's come back, do the eyeballing, hold on, stop sharing. Oh, there you go. Hello, everyone. These, um, yeah, so every single one of these um, educators has got um, has got videos, man. Do you know what I mean? There's videos out there, right? There's a lot of information out there, tons of information. And wow, that, that is what you're paying for. You're not paying for me, you know? Me, like I said, I am a PR, I'm here to help you guys understand the basics, that's all I'm here to do. Um, it makes me feel fulfilled, it helps me to stay on my toes, you know, um. So I'm gonna be running these every single Sunday. Next time we might look at candlesticks. Um, the time after that, we might look at market structure, the time after that, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of fundamental things that, you know, we need to really understand, right? However, um, the fundamentals won't take you the whole way, I can promise you. Because me, I'm not only studying fundamentals, I'm studying advanced. I will not teach advanced until I get paid to teach advanced, do you know what I mean? Until I feel qualified, until I'm earning enough money to teach advanced. I can't presume to come and teach you, oh, look at this strategy when me, I haven't got, you know, twenty thousand pounds in my own trading account. What can I do? Do you know what I mean? So let me, soon be there, soon be there, thank you, thank you. Actually, I receive it, I receive it. But you know, at the same time, I'm only gonna show you guys basics for the time being, yeah? So bear with, bear with, come to the sessions, bring your new people, um, you know, bring suggestions, bring insight, bring input. Um, and bring questions. Does anyone have any questions today that you guys wanna ask? Has anyone asked any, has anyone got anything that you wanna know? Did anything not make sense? Do you want me to quickly run over anything? We can kind of go for like another ten minutes until half past, if you feel at one, if you have any questions.
I've got a question, Nate. Thanks for the presentation, awesome teaching, I've just learned quite a lot. I've got some new members of the team and um, I tend to direct them to the uh, shift mastery videos. Don't know if you found that useful, just to get people acquainted with the apps and things like copy paste signals. But I noticed it's not, it was not working today, I don't know if you've noticed.
It's not working today?
No, videos are not playing.
Oh, okay. Hmm, I haven't noticed, actually. I've seen all the shift videos that I'm gonna watch. So I haven't, I haven't been on there and kind of seen any more, unfortunately, but.
Can they find it on Wow instead?
There's tons of it on Wow.
On Wow.
Ah, there you go, thank you, Justin.
Wow's better.
Wow is better, I welcome it.
Much better.
Hmm.
Hmm. Yeah, the one in the, um, in the shift app is just so quick access for you, but yeah, everyone would advise always go to Wow.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Appreciate that, bro. Lovely. Yeah, well done, bro, on getting some signups as well, getting some people into the, into the business, man. Congratulations on that. It's good to see your friends making money, do you know what I mean, and growing and developing, so. Yeah, man, feel free to bring them in here as well, do you know what I mean? They'll definitely get value, you know, they'll definitely find benefit, I'm sure they will. Um.
Some of them are hidden.
Yeah. Hey, lovely, lovely, excellent, excellent, okay? If you're on Stanley's team, let me know, come on, don't be shy, guys. Don't be shy, come on, make some noise, man, where are you? Your team are shy.
Yes, I am.
Hey, there you go, there you go, lovely stuff. Good to have you, man, welcome. All right, brilliant. Guys, I think we've had a good session, man. Does anyone, anyone else have any questions? Anyone have any questions on, do you all feel as though you understand what a pip is, yeah? You understand what a pip is. Someone tell me in one sentence, what is a pip?
So you need to have measurement.
You need a metal.
Hey, la, 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 I love it. That's what I'm talking about, because you need to measure it simple. Nate, can I say something? Yeah, go on, King.
It's cool, yeah. So yeah, just wanted to say, listen, amazing, amazing, amazing session first and foremost. It's been absolutely brilliant. I was, I was listening from beginning right to the end, just thinking, okay, let me see what he's gonna say right now. Let me see if he's gonna, you know, say the right thing and. I was absolutely proud of you, man. It's been an amazing session. I'm sure everyone can agree that we get so much value from your sessions. And guys, listen, we've all got teams, we've all got customers that, you know, say there's not enough trading. Like, here's the proof right here. Nate has taken an hour and a bit out of his time to literally help everyone, you know, understand the information a bit more better. He doesn't need to, and to be fair, the information's all in the well, but sometimes it is more clearer to get that relatable uh, information into clear context. So Nate, once again, just wanna say absolutely amazing, thank you. And yeah, man, just keep, keep going. And guys, let's promote these calls because this is gonna help everyone. So every Sunday, we can get everyone on these calls and pack it out. And you know, if anyone else feels confident enough to, to chip in as well, let's go, let's get it, man. But yeah, Nate, back to you, King, well done.
Thank you, bro. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Guys, I am gonna go and get on the, with my Sunday. Because I'm supposed to go into the park with my goddaughter after three o'clock, so she's so cute, I've got a picture of her there, I will show you something. So, so you know, I'm sure all of you guys are gonna have fantastic Sundays. Um, oh, last thing to mention, the reason we do these Sunday study sessions on a Sunday is because the market's open tomorrow, okay? So I need you guys to stay in this mindset. I don't want you to come out of Sunday study session and switching your telly, yeah? Um, or, you know, come out of Sunday study session and, you know, um, I don't know, start wasting time, right? Have a look at a chart and think, this is a chart, do, do something now, do something immediately, yeah? Come off the call and say, right, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna look at this chart this week. That's it, just make, pick a chart, make a decision, right? This is what I'm gonna do this week, I'm gonna look at it, and then next week, tell me how you get on. That's it, just pick something, stick to it, discipline yourself, be consistent, whatever it is, you know, say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna set a um, a risk threshold this week. I'm not gonna lose more than thirty pounds in a trade or whatever you decide, right? Um.
Just tell the market open tonight, Nate, at ten.
Yeah, it does, yeah, yeah.
You guys should be looking at G B P U S D. Nate done all the hard work for you. It's looking like a nice.
It's looking nice, isn't it? It's looking nice.
I had a question on the candlestick, but thanks to you, I'm thinking next week, I wanna wait till that, go on in next week.
I know. Excellent. Okay, yeah, we'll do that next week, we'll do that next week. If you remind me, I'll make sure to stick to that because um, I might, I might forget. I am forgetful. And it's my birthday this week, guys, woo, June seventeenth. Thanks, guys, thanks, thanks. So if I forget, next, uh, Thursday. Hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you know, if I, if anything slips my mind, then just remind me. I'll see you lot on Sunday, I'm, I am due to be here. Um, but if anything, I know I've got a strong team that can support, do you know what I mean? And like I said at the beginning, we're gonna be working on getting these sessions a little bit more structured, because right now it's just me on Wow, just kind of vomiting information at you lot. Um, and while I know you're appreciating it, you know, I am now thinking about sustainability and making sure that this lasts for, you know, the next thirty years. Because like I said, I want this to be something that my, um, I want this to be something that my signups, 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 signups can, can benefit from, do you understand? So, yeah, man, okay, lovely, guys, have a great weekend and we will talk next week. Bye, everyone.
Thank you. Happy Sunday, thank you.
Bye.